All right, I'll gavel the meeting of formal order here. I'll now ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Councilman DeCiccio. Councilwoman Gallegos.
Here.
Councilman Noakowski. Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Valenzuela. Councilman Waring. Vice Mayor Williams.
Here.
Mayor Stanton.
I am here, so we have a quorum present. We are fortunate to have an interpreter with us today. Ms. Garcia, please introduce yourself for the audience. Good to see you.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Marielena Garcia. Soy intérprete del idioma español. Cualquiera de ustedes que necesite ayuda durante servicios de intérprete durante esta reunión, por favor, me lo dejas saber a mí o a la Secretaría Municipal. Gracias.
Thank you very much. We're now on to the portion of our agenda where we hear citizen comments. Under our city council rules, citizens have up to three minutes to provide commentary for the city council on non-agendized items. City council cannot substantively respond to that under our Arizona open meeting law. We go for a total of 15 minutes. If we need additional time for citizen comments, citizens have the opportunity at the end of today's meeting to provide additional comments. So 15 minutes now, and then as much time as necessary at the end of today's meeting. Our first speaker, Ms. Joanne Scott Woods, up to three minutes of testimony, followed by Mr. Kim Baker, followed by Mr. Leonard Clark. Ms. Woods, good to see you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I woke up crying at 3:30 a.m. last Thursday. It's not the first time I've cried over lack of accountability for officers, especially in Phoenix, especially regarding our black community. I still cry for the children of Romaine, Brisbane, who lost their father in 2014 because, as the findings of his family's successfully concluded civil suit, that either the Phoenix Police Department failed to train Officer Mark Ryan, or he failed to comprehend the training. I cry now for the parents in 2017 of Joshua Baker, who realized they could have lost their son because Officers Snow and Mosquita, who stopped their son, failed to understand their training or were not trained by our department. The department ultimately, though, is responsible for their lack of following procedure, which is evident in the Salvation Army surveillance video. Officers of integrity have been asking for dash cams and body cams since 2010. Dash cams were taken off the table by Chief Garcia because the force was promised body cams following the first body cam study that gave us 5% in 2015. Another study gave us 5% more, but when the Assistant Chief Mike Kurtenbach expanded the Smart Policing Initiative to full deployment within one year, the mayor and city council only approved increments over a five-year period, and Chief Williams added one more in 2018 in order to seek another vendor. According to the city manager, there is a $5 million amount being held and reserved for body cams. When lives are at stake and fear remains stable in the black community and an awareness grows in all communities, we, but especially our elected officials, are responsible for our city's 2017 ranking as number one nationally in officer-involved shootings. Full deployment of body cams can occur within a year. Let's come together as a community, as a mayor and city council, and as a police department, and honor the sanctity of life through the lens of truth that body-worn cameras memorialize. And I have a citizen's petition to give you for full deployment within a year following assignment of a vendor contract. And I also have copies of my statement for each of you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Mr. Kim Baker?
Mr. Mayor and council, thank you for this opportunity once again to come before you. I'm a little discouraged by the absence of some, but I will not let that bother my presentation today. I do have some documents for the council. And Mayor, I have a personalized copy of the video stop for you.
Thank you very much. Our city clerk will receive those from you.
Once again, before you, with a concern as a parent of a 16-year-old son. Joshua represents many young people today who have to deal with the stresses of life. One should not be coming from law enforcement. They have enough to deal with in their teen years. We found, and I say "we" because there's others working with me, we found a operation, I guess, manual for the traffic patrol enforcement. And the document that I gave you actually on the bottom deals with unmarked vehicles and the procedure and policy that's in place that is supposed to take place when they are effectuating a stop. These officers fail to follow these policies that are in place by this city and this city government. And that's why I'm here again to say, I want their jobs, because if they got room to harass my son and violate this city's policy, that Phoenix up on that wall used to be marooned. Now it's black. I'm not here to ask for any preferential treatment, but I am here to ask that my son be treated fairly in this matter. And in light of what has transpired, once again, one of your city judges dismissed the charges against my son after viewing the video that I gave you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you take some time to look at it, because I understand that you're going to be leaving office after May, or May 30th or thereabout. I wanted to make sure you get a copy of it, so that going into DC, if that is your journey, that you would do something impactful here, outside of what you've done, but in light of this case, do something impactful here that these young men, three African-Americans, will know that Mayor Stanton, now that he's in DC, cares about us. That is my petition today. Read the document. Look at the video. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Baker. Appreciate your testimony. Mr. Leonard Clark is next.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Leonard Clark. I had some things I wanted to speak to you, but first, I want to thank all of my fellow veterans and all those serving in uniform in the United States Armed Forces and all of the civil rights people who in the past have sacrificed. That's the reason I'm allowed to speak, because democracy is like anything else. If you don't use it, you lose it. So I don't take for granted this right to speak. I know I say painful things sometimes, but I'm not here, you know, to necessarily make you happy. In the news, in the New York Times, we had the whole Basis Charter School fiasco, people buying multimillion-dollar condominiums in New York City, you know, and they say they've got it so rough, the teachers aren't getting paid enough in the Basis Charter School and other charter schools. Well, I, you know, I've, over the last four or five years, watched you all vote unanimously for a billion sweet tax-free dollars in corporate charter schools, tax-free municipal dollars, while our public schools go wanting because the legislature is so cheap and they do not like public education, AKA Kelly Townsend. Now, my next thing is Marty Atencio, my fellow United States Army veteran. I stood vigil with some of my brothers and sisters in Occupy 2011. Phoenix police were involved at the intake unit, Maricopa County Sheriff's Office. The Maricopa County has settled, and now I heard that you are settling on Marty Atencio. I believe Stephen Lemons announced this, but, or you're near a settlement. I do not believe all police are bad. I believe they have a very tough job now. It's kind of like being the tax collector. Everybody wants to hate on the police. But I am greatly disappointed that I have not heard one negative, one negative comment from you about taunting this mentally ill man who was off of his medications, the things that they did to him, beating him, tasing him, illegal chokeholds. I've watched you, and some of you aspire to higher political office, but I've not seen any political courage, okay? This is a fellow United States Army veteran, and I'm very saddened that you didn't say anything about that. You didn't say anything about the Trump rally, and I understand, you know, you don't want to commit political suicide by angering the police union. Again, I don't hate all police, so people on the left won't like me, people on the right won't like me. But you need to have some political courage. We're the only city that does not have a civilian review board with teeth. The police can tell you, the police chief, we have that. No, because they have no teeth. It's nothing but a suggestion board. Also, I also want to thank the police who put their lives on the line, you know, many a time when I feel endangered. Sometimes it's good to know that there are police there. So I'm not here to hate the police, but recently, a 60, I guess, just recently, a 60-year-old man in a wheelchair has been shot in Phoenix, and I hope the police can bring that culprit. These drive-by shootings and the rest of it are getting out of control. And the last thing, yes, Phoenix Suns, number-one draft pick. Now, let's just hope we can build upon this. Go, Phoenix Suns. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. The next speaker will be Julie Karasik, and then followed by Beatrice Heron.
I am here to speak about application 538-17-6, which was one of the four medical marijuana dispensary cases referenced in the article on the front page of today's Arizona Republic. On November 22nd, 2017, the residents in our community and surrounding communities were informed that application 538-17-6 for a use permit in two variances was filed to allow a medical marijuana dispensary at 1616 East Glendale Avenue. The variance to allow a dispensary within 500 feet of a residential property impacted four residentially zoned districts. Our community is 114 feet away. While the variance to allow a dispensary within 1,320 feet of a place of worship impacted two churches. We are not opposed to medical marijuana, but we are opposed to the location. While a small, isolated pocket of C2 zoning mostly comprised of C1-type uses such as restaurants and shops exists at the 16th Street and Glendale intersection, it is minimal compared to other dispensaries located within the city. There will be a significant increase in traffic that will create a public safety issue. Additionally, the property is next to the Arizona Canal, which is used by families and other citizens for recreation. On December 4th, 2017, the zoning hearing officer found absolutely no hardships and denied the application. On April 5th, 2018, the appeal was heard by the Board of Adjustment. We submitted evidence of Ford signatures and fraudulent addresses supporting the dispensary. These signatures were purportedly collected and submitted, together with a signed affidavit by an individual referenced in the article. Many of them were purportedly from our community, and we provided signed affidavits from the impacted residents. These same residents signed our opposition petition. Not only did the Board of Adjustment overlook the forgeries and fraudulent signatures, they overlooked numerous misstatements and other inaccuracies to which we were not given an opportunity to respond, and overruled the zoning officer by a vote of five to one. On May 2nd, 2018, Phoenix City Council appointed four new Board of Adjustment members. We spoke before the council vote about the impact the new board appointments would have on our request for reconsideration, which was to be discussed during the May 3rd Board of Adjustment meeting. On May 3rd, 2018, the Board of Adjustment held its meeting. All scheduled items except ours were continued to the following week, when a full board was anticipated. The previous day's change of board members eliminated 60% of the Board of Adjustment members that could motion, could have motioned for our request for reconsideration. If a motion had been made, there was not a quorum for a vote, so no vote would have been possible. The irregularities that occurred erased all chances for us to successfully receive a fair hearing or achieve a request for reconsideration. We expected a fair hearing from the city, and that did not occur. We expect Phoenix City Council support to provide a remedy for this unjust and unprecedented situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Mayor?
Yes, who's on, who is this?
Sal.
Councilman DeCiccio?
May I ask, and I know the answer to this, may I ask staff a question? Had that reconsideration passed, would those individuals that could have appealed that recommendation stand on the board?
Do you want to get a briefing afterwards? I don't know if this would be appropriate.
Well, I'd like to have city staff answer it today in public record, because I believe that that reconsideration would have changed and kept them and gave them their right to appeal. But that's my personal opinion. I'd just like to have that verified by staff verbally in the meeting.
All right, I appreciate that, although we're not agendized for this item, so we can't have an ongoing discussion of it. Otherwise, we'd be in violation of the open meeting law. So I'll ask the city attorney to talk to you after the meeting, provide that information to you. I'm just concerned about preserving the open meeting law. Next speaker will be Beatrice Heron.
I understand that, but I have a right to ask.
I appreciate the question, councilman. I appreciate the question. Beatrice Heron's next, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to thank you for all you have done in this city, and I know you're trying, but I know it's a lot more need to be done here in this city. And I appreciate what you all are doing in this city. I know it takes a lot to run this city, keep it clean, because a lot of us out here don't care about the city and the earth. And like, a lot of, like I told you before, it's in Valley Metro, it's a lot of cigarette butts out there, about a thousand, and I'm concerned about that. I'm just an average person, just walk the earth, just trying to live day by day. But I just think it would be good if you could, I don't know, put signs up and tell the people out there not to throw the cigarette butts. Just say, "First in Valley Metro, down there on Northern, the beautiful Flawless down there, just full of cigarette butts, all of them, all down through the rail, nothing but cigarette butts." And I think you need to get in touch with the cigarette companies and tell them they need to invest in cleaning up this earth, because there's a lot of cigarette butts out there polluting, all in the water. And also, I'd like to say about the bridges out there, I walk them every day, and they are weak, especially the one, I know it's in Tempe, down on Priest Drive, that bridge is real weak. I'm almost afraid to go over it. But I just came just to say, you know, when I be praying, I be telling the Lord about these things, and I be saying, you know, I just want to get it out here so we can start doing more about it, because there's a lot of traffic on our roads and a lot of wear and tear. And also, we need to, we need to consider that. I be saying about the ballgames and things, people going back and forth on the games, just wearing the tan on the roads. And there's just a lot of this citizen, everyday citizens are getting killed out here. Just, they really are. And I think it's because a lot, too much traffic on the road. Also, I'd like to, I would like to tell you another thing, Mr. Mayor, is about the, the police period, about the pigeons out there. Now, this Central Station, they are drinking out of the water fountains, the same one we drank out of, the bees, too. They are drinking out of the water fountain. They are hot, and they thirsty, just like we are, and they need water. I would think, you know, I was just asking, Mr. Mayor, you consider putting a bird bath out there for them, because I feel so sorry for those pigeons. I don't know what to do. Their feet are all bad. And I looked the other day, it was a bee up in the, giving us some water.
All right, Ms. Heron, each speaker has three minutes, and I really appreciate it, but I got to get on to the speakers. Thanks so much. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you.
I really appreciate it. How about Brent Kleiman?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I am here for our regular meeting and to observe everything that goes on, but I wanted to take a minute to thank the mayor. I'm assuming, based on my look at the calendar, this is the last formal meeting that we'll have you as a mayor. So I want to thank you for your years of service and everything that's gone on, and this is, a lot of good things have happened in the city of Phoenix. Obviously, there's still things that need to be fixed, but I just want to thank you for your service and wish you the best of luck in your upcoming election. And with the last city council meeting and the one before, where obviously elections have changed now to the November elections with the city, I am hoping that our city elections still have the same turnout, but the same nonpartisanship. And I look forward to listening to our two council members that will be running for mayor, as well as all the other candidates running for mayor, and debating the ideas and their positive viewpoints on what can happen in the city of Phoenix and not go into partisan politics as this gets closer to November. This, this city council, as skewed as it is by some views of Democrat/Republican, has worked very well, and I think all the parties have done well, and I hope the future board that comes, or the council that comes forth out of November's election, does the same work, because you guys are really the one government entity that is accomplishing things and getting work done. We're not seeing that at the state level, we're not seeing it at the federal level. So we need to continue that partnership and the working together that this city does so well. So again, thank you for the service that you've provided, Mr. Mayor, and look forward to your upcoming election, and definitely look forward to the upcoming mayoral election in November.
All right, thank you very much, Brent, for those kind words and your active involvement in the city. We have one final speaker, so I'll take the prerogative to just let that person speak, because that way we don't have to wait till just one person at the end. Thomas Simon? Is Mr. Simon here? It's good to see you.
Mayor and councilpeople, I have a petition that I want to give to you.
Thank you very much. City clerk will receive that.
There's copies for each one. Well, thank you for letting me speak. I represent Chinese United and Super Al Ranch Market, Sushan Palace Restaurant, and Beijing Garden Restaurant. The petition that you have before us is, before you is one to ask you to take some action in the next couple of weeks. It's been chronicled in the newspaper even today how Beijing Gardens has been suffering from a landlord who has done some criminal things, according to the Superior Court Judge True North and David Tedesco. They've cut their phone lines, they've cut their internet service, they've stolen their rooftop fan to prevent them from cooking, and many other things that they've done here in this city. And the council has been quiet about it, and it concerns us. Charlie Li of Super Al Ranch came to this council in September to talk about True North, and True North sued him for talking at the city council to try and violate his free speech rights. He won in court just two weeks ago, and so True North has been sanctioned by the court for trying to keep him from talking to you. That's the kind of corporate citizen True North has proven to be. And finally, the act that the court has taken to call what True North does is criminally wrong should make us all feel like we need to do something. And so, if I might read into the record, petition to Phoenix City Council, "In light of the actions by company True North and 668 North, this citizen's petition requests that the city council do as follows: Acknowledge that the actions taken by True North and its subsidiaries against Beijing Garden do not represent best practices in the city of Phoenix and do not have their support. Additionally, supporters of the petition ask that the city of Phoenix, its mayor, and each city council member condemn True North and its subsidiaries for what the Maricopa County Court has called 'criminal actions' taken against renters at the Chinese Cultural Center." And finally, supporters of this petition ask the city of Phoenix, its mayor, and each city council member to stand with it and condemn True North and its subsidiaries for attempting to quiet the free speech of Charlie Li of Super Al Ranch. And finally, folks, I brought with me something that's indicative of what we believe the Chinese Americans have gotten from the city council on this issue, baloney. And we want you to start acting right as it relates to this issue. Ms. Gallegos, you have been silent. We have tried to get meetings with you. Now you're going to run for office. Chinese Americans say, "Stop the baloney."
Thank you very much, Mr. Simon.
Mayor, may I respond?
You may.
I have had several meetings with the Chinese-American community. We've had regular dialogue, and so I don't appreciate you saying that information.
For the coalition, I have called your office 10 times, 10 times, and you have refused to meet with me so far. I'm the official spokesman. I would suggest that you have your office get ahold of us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simon. Anything else? All right, we're going to move on to today's agenda. The next on the agenda, city clerk, will please read the 24-hour paragraph.
The titles of the following ordinance and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting, and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordnances number G6461 and 6462, S44550 through 44620, and 44622 through 44628, and resolutions 21638 through 21644.
Thank you very much. There are no meeting minutes to approve today, so now we'll move on to boards and commission.
Mayor, I would move to approve the creation of the South Central Transit Oriented Development Steering Committee.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Ms. Barker, did you have testimony on the proposed boarding, the creation of the South Central TOD Steering Committee? Good to see you.
Yes, item number one. Thank you, mayor and council, Diane Barker in District 7. And I use transit, and I am supporting this motion. I would like to add that I believe that in the varied constituency of this subcommittee, that there should be at least one public member who has no conflicts outside of the fact that they really would like to see the use of good public transit in the area. And in that vein, in two weeks, on Wednesday, you could ride the rail. We have it running already. You could ride a zero bus and go to Walk Phoenix Wednesday. It's at Hans Park, and we get to get, all get in to walk through the Japanese garden when you go. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. There is a motion, there is a second. Councilwoman, please, you have a comment on the proposed TOD Steering Committee?
Yes, this is a very exciting step forward for this project. I want to say thank you to the many stakeholders who helped us get this grant from the Federal Transit Administration, including members of the District 8 African-American Advisory Council who went to DC and talked with the then Obama administration about how important this project was. The Obama administration really made a lot of investments in South Central on this project. It was the only project they selected, I believe, west, in the western portion of our country for their Ladders of Opportunity grant, which will help us invest it and help the people who are already in the community to benefit from development. We've had many other partners, including the Ford Foundation, who've helped us really lead the way on, on issues of equity and making sure that as we develop, it's a real success for this community. So this has been a team effort to get us here so far. We have a great group of stakeholders with very diverse opinions on the project and perspectives, and I think we're going to have some robust debates, but come up with some great wins for the community. So thank you to the many community leaders from District 7 and 8 who've agreed to volunteer their time on this important project.
Thank you very much, councilwoman. Any other comments by members of this committee? Just echo that, this is a great committee, a very diverse committee, diverse in viewpoints. They're going to have some awesome debates about the nature and the type of development that should occur as a result of the investment that the people of this community are making in light rail. I don't need to tell anyone on this dais or in the community that we've already seen $10 billion of public and private investment along the existing light rail line, and it's coming, and we want to make sure we get it right, and that's why this committee's work is incredibly, incredibly important. And the people that have been asked to serve and are willing to serve are the right people to make, to make these choices and to strike that delicate balance. So I'm, I'm super excited about the creation of this committee, and we are moving onward with light rail in South Phoenix community. All right, there's been a motion and a second. Councilman, please.
I'm going to be supporting the motion for the creation of the committee, but I'm going to just put a caveat out there that the city of Phoenix has a 30-day cooling-off period before anybody can be seated in a committee, and just putting that warning out there that should I win my court case, which I'm expecting to do, then it puts all these appointments in jeopardy, if they're seated before the 30-day period.
All right, thank you for that admonition. Any other comments by members of the council? All right, there's a motion in favor of the creation of the South Central TOD Steering Committee, and obviously- Committee, and obviously in favor of the particular members. There's a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
So, there is one no. Is everybody present? Seven to one. So, by vote of seven to one, the committee will be seated, and I think there are many members of the committee here to be sworn in. So, I'll come down to my right, your left on the floor, and I'll swear those members in, and then if you come behind the dais afterwards, so individual members of the council can say, "Thank you."
Mayor, could I make the motion to approve all the boards and commission nominations?
Second.
There's a motion.
That way you, anybody that's here, you can swear in.
You are correct. We did the motion to approve the committee. Now it's a separate motion on the actual committee members, so motion in favor of the committee members, a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. All right, would you please raise your right hand, aye, and state your name? Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same, and defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of the office of... Film blank. Film blank. According to the best of my ability. So, help me God. You're official. Thanks for your service in advance. Good to see you.
Congratulations.
citizens of our city. Now we'll move on to liquor license applications. Vice Mayor, do we have an omnibus on liquor license applications?
I move to approve items 3 through 25.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There are cards on the items, but all in favor of the motion. Any comments by members of our city council? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Those pass unanimously. Now we're on to ordinances, resolutions, new business, planning, and zoning. Vice Mayor, is there an omnibus on those items?
I move to approve items 26 through 147, except the following: 52 through 54, 63, 74, 77, 78, 93, 96, 97, 115, and 147. And then exclude these items for public comment: 45, 53, 54, 72, 87, 96, and 147.
That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any cards on those items? Any questions or comments by members of our council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so those items pass unanimously. Next item on the floor is item 52.
45. 45. They haven't got it up there yet. It's 45.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, I apologize, is item number 45. Is there a motion on 45?
Move approval.
To approve 45? There is a second. Item 45 concerns payment authority to the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. Leonard Clark, did you have testimony on item 45?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for letting me speak. Yes, I strongly support this. I was neutral to the beginning. Arizona Department of Environmental Quality has been weakened a lot, and that's not your fault at the state level, you know, it's got the current hateful actions taking towards the environmental safekeeping here in Arizona and the rest of the country, so it's no surprise. But anyways, the limited things that they do, you know, making sure the city of Phoenix is keeping in compliance with what's left of the federal standards as the individual in the White House decides to destroy them all, because we don't need drinking, clean drinking water anyways, you know. But as long as the rules still exist, I'm glad that Arizona Department of Environmental Quality is doing that, and I'm wondering, could you put in a specific request of Arizona Department of Environmental Quality? Since we do have a lot of schools in the city of Phoenix with lead in the drinking water, and many of my fellow educators tell me that they can't drink the water and their children can't, maybe we should address that, as the governor did have a limited test. So, thank you, I just thought that was apropos, and Jermaine, I'm hoping you can ask that. I strongly support this, and please test that lead in the drinking water of many of our schools in the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. Vice Mayor.
Mayor, I just, no, I can't respond to him, but I will tell you, the city of Phoenix was the first one to step forward and offer free testing to all the schools in Phoenix.
Just for clarity, appreciate that, but it's a point well made, Mr. Clark. All right, so the motion is in favor of 45. There's a second. Any comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that item passes unanimously. Next item, now we're on item 52, which is a public hearing. Item 52 concerns the proposed Avenida del Sol annexation. It is a public hearing. There's no action today on that, so I'll just see if there's any public comment on 52. Public hearing is now open. Are there any cards on 52? Is anyone here in the audience wishing to speak on item number 52, the proposed Avenida del Sol annexation? Going once, going twice. Public hearing is now closed. No action today, so we'll move on to the next agenda. The next agenda item is item 53. Item 53 is a call of special election for November 6, 2018, on the Dark Money Initiative. Is there a motion on 53?
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Leonard Clark, item 53.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers, for letting myself, Leonard Clark, speak. Yeah, it's been a lot of confusion. I unfortunately couldn't be here when you had that great discussion on what's going to be on the ballot and these different items. So, I put neutral, I, you know, I'm going to stay neutral right now. I was seeing if there'd be any more discussion on this, and then there was like that other item that's very confusing about timing, what's going to be on the ballot, what's not, but I just want to hear what you have to say. Thank you for letting me speak.
All right, thank you very much. The item on the agenda today is not the larger items, it's only the proposed Dark Money Initiative, similar to what the city of Tempe did. We're going to place that, assuming it's an affirmative vote today, we'll place that on the November 6 ballot.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I do think that's great, that is very good. Thank you, we don't need any more of that dark money. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. On our turn to members of the council, obviously, we had a thorough discussion of this at the last meeting. Today is more of the issue of putting the legal language together for the vote proposed for November 6. Any additional comments by members of this council? Councilwoman.
Thank you so much. Mayor, this is an agenda item that I brought forward with your support and Councilwoman Stark's. It will require the same rules of everyone who makes expenditures in city elections. If all of the individuals who are here today make a contribution in the election, your name is, is public. The same should be true for nonprofits, for corporations, for entities that were established to influence elections. It will foster civic courage if people know who is spending in our elections, and that transparency is important for the people of Phoenix to have confidence in their government. We have modeled this on the work Tempe did. Voters in Tempe approved a similar initiative with 91% of the vote. Voters want to know who's involved in our elections, and I look forward to sending this to our voters in November.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of our city council?
Mayor.
Councilwoman, please.
I'll be voting no on this for the same reasons I listed before, not to belabor a point like this, but for the same reasons, and want to make sure that those same reasons get in the record.
All right, so the councilman is opposed to it for the same reasons he stated a couple weeks ago, not to belabor the point. Any other additional comments by members of the council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Okay, by a vote of seven to two, the motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item 54.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second on the form of the ballot. Leonard Clark, 54.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. It was very complicated. I'm not sure if that was what you had the long discussion on, last council meeting or a meeting before that, where you're having a hard time legally, what would be allowed to be on the ballot, and what wouldn't, and so it sounds like you worked that out. I guess I missed that meeting, or I don't know if you're going to have a discussion on it, but thank you for letting me speak. I just want to hear more about that, because we're all like confused what's going on. It sounds like it's not very easy to figure out. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark. There's a motion and a second in favor of 54. Any comments by members of our city council? Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so by a vote of seven to two, we've set the form of the ballot. Next item is item 63. Please, Vice Mayor.
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second on 63. Are there any cards on 63? Any members of the council would like to have any questions or comments on item 63? Roll call. DeCiccio.
No.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so I believe it's seven to two. The motion passes. Next item is 72.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and second in favor of 72. This is on senior nutrition meal program services. Mr. Leonard Clark, you have testimony on 72.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Many years ago, I stood a little route to the West Valley, and I cannot thank you enough if you vote for this. We have so many folks right now, people are worried about their extended family members and their elderly people, people who cannot get out and cannot cook their meals. Thank you so much. I really hope that you'll vote for this. This is one of the best things that, this is why I believe when I see you doing things like that, my faith is renewed. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark. There's a motion in favor of 72, a second. Any comments or questions? Roll call. DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, that motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item 74.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second in favor of 74. Are there any cards on that item?
Mayor.
Any comments by members of our city council?
Mayor.
Councilman, please.
Thank you. I was wondering if I could put a friendly amendment onto this, if I could, to Councilwoman Thelma Williams, and then I also want to thank Councilwoman Gallego and her office for helping broker the additional agreement. It's additional language, I think, and I believe strongly will help protect our citizens. I don't normally vote for this type of thing, but if we could get the additional language in there that staff has agreed to, I would vote for this, because I think it protects it. We've seen in the past where people have purchased properties from the city of Phoenix at a certain price, and then they turn around and flip them, or we buy them at a different level. The language, and I'll just read the language I'd like to, if Councilwoman Williams would be accepting of it, is that basically, following the quote of escrow, "This agreement shall prohibit the conveyance of the lot to anyone other than the buyers of the completed owner-occupied unit, or the City of Phoenix Neighborhood Services Division. Should the developer fail to perform their obligation as specified." So, bottom line is, if they convey these properties, we can basically get them back.
I guess I would need a legal opinion if that meets all federal requirements.
Are we in a position to...
It's just the first I've heard this amendment, so I just want to make sure everything's clear, because I, it sounds reasonable.
Yeah, what it does, Councilwoman, may I add something in here, Mayor?
So, Mayor, members of council, if I can clarify. So, Councilman, is the amendment's purpose to prevent the proposed developer who enters into this agreement with us from flipping the lots for a profit in essence, so that the only way, the only person they can sell them to is the ultimate home purchasers when they're developed, or back to neighborhood services? Is that the purpose of the amendment?
That's exactly it.
Okay. Now, now that I understand, perhaps...
Did you write the amendment down? Did somebody get that?
I didn't write it down word for word, but that was the purpose of the...
I think we do have a...
We have a copy.
Copy here that my chief of staff has.
And Councilwoman Gallego, it's fantastic working with you.
Yes, and so this is a project in District 8, and we are very supportive of Councilman DeCiccio's amendment.
Okay, so then it's...
So, Mayor, members of council, what I don't know is whether or not language to that effect was either included in the RFP and in the proposed development agreement to begin with, so that it was part of the expectations of the developer. I would assume that the developer didn't believe that he could flip the lots. In that sense, even if it wasn't in the RFP or the development agreement, I would assume...
All right, well, to the best of our ability, answer that question. If you need more time, let us know, and then Councilwoman Pastor has some questions as well. Go ahead.
Mayor, members of council, I'm not sure the exact language in the RFP to that effect, but we have been working with our law department as to the options. We did float that through the council offices. I haven't seen the exact language that was proposed today, though.
Can we continue?
We could, or we could pass it and then do a reconsideration, which I would if they came back and said, "Hey, this doesn't work the way..." But this language was covered by staff.
Our city manager has a request.
And it's not meant to hold up a case in Councilwoman Gallego's district at all. I was just trying to find a way to make it work. And then additionally, this was covered by staff, the language here. This wouldn't have been done just on our own.
If I could request, Mayor, that we could get maybe 10 minutes here, so if we hold this item out until later in the meeting, and that'll give us a chance to just make sure we understand it fully, and when we can come back...
That's great. Councilwoman Pastor, do you have additional questions before we do that at this time?
No, I was trying to figure out how we can get this vetted and understand what's being asked. It sounds like several council, or some council people were aware of it, but not all of us are, and would like to understand the language.
Right, so if we can take it until the end of the meeting, come back with it, and then if we're still not ready, we can continue it, but understanding the councilman's not trying to delay it, we'll take a few minutes.
No, not at all. Matter of fact, this has been secure language that the city of Phoenix just doesn't get basically messed with later in the future. But the concern is, you know, there was always an issue of whether or not this was the right price, or not the right price, and whether or not people buy properties from the city of Phoenix and then flip them later. the City of Phoenix and then flip them later. This language prevents that.
Has that happened in the past?
Yeah, we, the City of Phoenix purchased an airport piece of property. Councilwoman Waring is aware of it. He's the one that brought it up. I mean, literally, he was in the process of purchasing a piece of property. I know. He does, he does, he is amazing when it comes to research like this. He's amazing, and his staff is, too. So, the bottom line is, we've seen this happen on some other things, and I just want to make sure that we look at some of this language that gives protection to the taxpayers long term, without delaying projects either.
Mayor, may I make a quick statement on the project?
Well, sure. Oh, less than 10 minutes.
So, Mayor...
Home, do you have an answer you can give in public at this time?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, I apologize for not having it sooner. Long story short is, is that we haven't completed the development agreement. We can add this as a condition to the development agreement, consistent with the friendly amendment that the councilman proposed, so it's not impossible to do at this point in time. We can add it into the negotiations to finalize the agreement.
Then I accept the amendment.
Perfect.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
Okay, so the motion maker has accepted. I think the secondator already indicated that it's in support of the concept behind it, the kind of a no-flipping provision. Is that unique to this type of project, or is that, would that apply to other proposed development agreements with the City of Phoenix, you know, land controlled by the City of Phoenix?
Mayor, members of the council, certainly if you set that policy, there's no reason why we can't do that. There might be, in the extraordinary circumstances, something in a grant condition that we'd have to take into account, but I can't imagine that we'd get grant money that encourages flipping. So, I'd imagine if you set that policy, we can do that.
And Mayor, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Pastor, and then Councilwoman DeCiccio, go first, please.
I just need the language. I want to read the language.
This has been a concern for some time now, and this type of language just gives long-term protection to taxpayers, making sure that the city doesn't get ripped off. It's not, you know, whenever you're in a field that is not your field, there's always this fear that you're making the wrong decision. And, you know, we're not in the real estate business. We own a lot of real estate, but we're not in that business. And the fact that we're not in it puts us at risk, and language like this protects us long term.
I don't know. That's why.
Mayor, may I?
Councilwoman, please.
Thank you. So this is a project in the Garfield neighborhood in District Eight. The city, at the request of neighbors, has acquired blighted properties over several years. Many of those were bulldozed and sit vacant, and the community has been very clear with us that they don't want those vacant lots. They want us to develop it, but that they have very high standards. Garfield is a special and unique neighborhood. It's regularly recognized for its wonderful attributes, and it has some great history. Really important things have happened in the Garfield neighborhood. It is part of our city's past and an important part of our future. The community has had extensive meetings on this and has very high standards. We're excited that the proposer who won is very familiar with the community's goals, the existing building stock, and the high-level engagement that's expected from the Garfield leadership. So I think this is a great proposer who can go forward with a product that's very consistent with what the community wants and that can make us very proud. It's one of the gateway neighborhoods to downtown. The community has been very clear with us, though, that they are ready to move forward. They don't want to see these vacant lots vacant anymore, and this is something that's been a priority of mine in District Eight. The city is a significant landowner, and we really want to push to develop these lands, this land, get it back on the tax rolls. It's a win for the taxpayers today and a win for the neighborhood, so I'm very excited and appreciate. Neighborhood Services has gone to a lot of meetings and had a lot of stakeholder engagement, and thank you to Chris and your team for your work on this very important project.
Councilwoman DeCiccio, is the intent of the language to make it the company that's purchasing it, or is it the individual key personnel within those companies? Obviously, leaders in real estate do move around from firm to firm on occasion, so if there's new ownership...
It's, it's...
What's that? Is there, if there's new ownership of the entity, are you okay with it?
Hard to, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead, Mayor, I'm sorry.
The question was, is that, obviously, when an entity purchases land, that entity may subsequently go through new ownership. Are you suggesting that the ownership of the land stay with the legal entity or with the individual key personnel of that entity, who may move to different firms or get financing from different entities?
Well, this keeps the property in that entity, is what it does, Mayor. And what happens on these types of deals, you could always, you know, you keep, you end up keeping the same name, but then you change your ownership, and it's basically a flip, is what occurs there, and then they are able to sell it for higher. The only things that I do, and I, I've got to commend Councilwoman Gallego, especially on something as critical as this, to work with me on this. I just got to tell her, I just, you know, very appreciative of the level you've gone to, to work together on this. But when you look at the language, it's meant to prevent people from flipping the property. That's just, that's it. And if they do change, you know, they can call themselves whatever they want to call themselves. It's still a flip. The City of Phoenix then has the right to go back in. Not that we would, but we would have the opportunity then to reevaluate this. It keeps, it keeps people on their commitment of exactly what they say they're going to do, that they do it, and they just, I'm a capitalist, I don't have a problem with capitalism or anything else like that. At the same time, there's an obligation to make sure, not only on this project, but on other projects, look to protect taxpayers with some simple language like this.
Okay, I'm actually in agreement with the principle that we should hold people accountable in that regard, and that we make an agreement with a particular developer, often because of their experience and a track record of success. So I just think that as a, as a practical matter, is a good thing. I do believe that it'll be very difficult to enforce because of changes in ownership, new personnel comes in, and so, you know, defining what is a flip, what not, may prove to be difficult, but conceptually, I think it's a step in the right direction.
And...
Please.
I think that the way we're going, I agree with that. However, who's going to enforce this? And, which is, I just want to know how it gets enforced.
So, Mayor, members of council, here are a couple of ways. One, we'll put it in the development agreement. Second, we'll put in presumably a timeline in the development agreement within which the development must occur, and other mileposts or requirements for the development. And if those, if the timeline and the mileposts aren't met, those would trigger a default, then a default might lead to the property revesting in the City of Phoenix.
Okay, thank you.
So, those are some ways to do it. We haven't obviously negotiated that with the developer yet, but that's conceptually how it would be.
Okay, one more scenario. Sometimes is the case, a company that starts out well-financed becomes undercapitalized over time. If a different entity were to enter the picture that's better capitalized, better able to fulfill the goal, I think, of what the councilman was trying to accomplish in the Garfield neighborhood, would this make it illegal to transfer land to a better-capitalized entity to fulfill that goal, which does happen on occasion?
Mayor, members of council, we can certainly negotiate that out, but I don't think it would make it illegal, provided there's no flip with profit from entity A to entity B.
That's exactly the point right there, Mayor. Sorry. I didn't mean, sorry, Brad, but that's exactly the point. If they buy it for $5,000 and then turn it for $7,500 and $2,500 profit, it prevents that.
So, Mayor, members of council, obviously, we're talking conceptually about how we would negotiate it. We're talking about our negotiation strategy here in public session with the developer, but, but that's, yeah, we did, I did. We can, long story short is, is that we believe that we can negotiate those language out that would, would make this provision enforceable, and we can also take into account that if the developer becomes undercapitalized and wants to transfer it, provided there's no flip profit, we can figure out some way to negotiate that out, I think, with the developer as well.
Exactly.
All right. I wish you well on that, and I will, I certainly will be supportive of the concept here today. The devil will, will be in the details, as always. Councilwoman, please.
Thank you. I think in this particular case, the goal is that the developer profits by completing the project and not because of changes in land value. In this particular case, though, this specific developer is someone who the community has a lot of confidence in, and one of the reasons I'm excited about supporting it is the specific developer who won, who understands the history of the community and the project needs. So, in this particular case, I'm really hopeful that this developer will complete the project.
I think that's a really good point. If the developer isn't able to accomplish it, but a better-capitalized one maybe in the future is able to accomplish it, and the transfer of land is done at a higher price than is paid now, would that become illegal under the proposal? The bottom line is, we don't want to do any, a self-defeating proposal that may actually harm the goal that we're trying to accomplish here today, and that's, again, the devil will be in the details in terms of the specific agreement, because I think it's a point well-made, having been around a long time. And we sometimes, you know, engage in zoning cases with great developers, and they have a great track record, but for a variety of reasons, end up not even able to complete the project. We want to make sure that if it's a good development, we don't do something that ends up stifling the ability of the project to move forward, even in the way that we want them to. Again, that's just born of many years of experience. All right, are there other comments by members of the council? Councilman, do you have any additional comments?
The only comment I have is that, in the future, that staff come visit council members knowing that language is being written or something's going to be changed, so that we're aware of it ahead of time, so that we can then be able to make a solid vote. Thank you.
My apologies on that, Mayor. I just figured this was not going to be that complicated, quite frankly, and I apologize.
I am the second. I did not accept it. Yes, I did. I accept.
Okay, there is a motion, there is a second. Any other comments? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor. Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number 77.
Move approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second on item number 77. Are there any cards on 77? Any comments from members of this council?
Well, I was part, I was part of the committee that moved this forward, and it's actually in the heart of the city in District Four, and so I'm just excited for this development to come about and really bring Park Central back alive, not that it hasn't been alive, but vibrant, and a great space of moving people back and forth and creating a momentum of the heart of the city that is needed. So, really appreciate all the partners involved, and I like the fact that we have quality partners building our city, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Noakowski?
Mayor, I'd like to thank the leadership of councilmember Pastor for really bringing the community together, and also for the parking solution that we're going to find for the downtown and midtown Phoenix, so thank you, Laura, for all your hard work in making this happen.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional comments by members of the council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Mayor, I'd just like to explain my vote. I'll be voting no, but that is not a reflection on the project or the people participating in it, as was reflected in other comments, so I don't need to repeat. I have very confidence I'm doing an outstanding job. It's just a quirk that I have an issue with the funding mechanism, but I do wish them all success, and they're a wonderful group that I'm sure will do a great job. Thank you.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the item passes eight to one. Next item on the agenda is item number 78.
Move approval. Second.
Motion and second, are there any cards on 78? Any comments by members of this council? Roll call.
DeCiccio.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so that passed eight to one as well. Next item on the agenda is item...
87.
7 is next.
I believe we have a card on that. I will move approval.
Item 87.
Item 87, there is a motion in favor. Is there a second on 87? Are there many cards on this item?
I would like to hear a report from staff.
That's excellent. Okay, so if our, do we have a second on 87 while staff's coming forward?
Second.
We do have a second? Okay, so this item, of course, concerns the proposed agreement to enter into with CPLC and the Diocese of Phoenix. So I don't know if, Chris, you're going to lead the, or Diana is going to lead this presentation, explain what is being proposed before this city council, and then there are numerous cards of folks to provide testimony on this particular item. Ms. Mackey?
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. We are here today with an item to bring the historic Sacred Heart Church forward in a letter of intent and a lease with the Diocese of Phoenix. At your December 2017 meeting, we heard the item for the 36 acres as Sky Harbor Center. The council approved of the development agreement and lease terms for a lease with Chicanos Por La Causa for a 50-year term for that property. The council also gave staff direction to work with the diocese to see if we could come to terms with the diocese on a lease to turn the sacred, the historic Sacred Heart Church back into a Catholic church. We have come forward with a successful conclusion with the diocese on that item and are here today and happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anything else from other professional staff members? Mr. Bennett? All right, excellent. Our legal team as well is present. Any questions from members of the council? Councilwoman, please.
I'm actually trying to pull the transcripts right now, but I've been being told that there are no transcripts on this item, that they have to watch the video. So I'm trying to find the transcripts of the day of the vote, because the day of the vote and the motion was to look at the, look at the property, work with the community, work with three entities, Sacred, Braun Sacred Heart, Sacred Heart, the diocese, it was actually the diocese, and the third one was with CPLC. In the heart of all of the working together, there was to be a discussion about Father Braun and building and looking at preserving and honoring the veterans of that area, honoring Father Braun and other items. And so, I just want to be able to get my transcript, we'll continue to listen, but, so I can read verbatim to then see if what was voted on as a motion, all three items came together and are honored. So, those are just my comments at this moment.
Thank you very much. There are, again, numerous citizens here wishing to provide testimony on this item. Each citizen has up to two minutes to provide testimony, but before that, Councilwoman Waring, question or comment?
Well, thank you. If I were to sum this up, Chris, it's fair to say this is a city-owned building, has been since the mid-'90s, gets used once a year, and that's it. So, obviously, that's problematic, and we pay for all the maintenance, but after, if we voted yes on this, the diocese would take care of it, and we'd save some money. Is that a fair sort of summary of just a, something you could put on a bumper sticker? Is that-
Mayor, Councilwoman Waring, that is correct.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
That's a big bumper sticker, but I get your point. Yeah, yeah, gotcha. All right, good.
Do not model this in your campaign.
All right. In favor of the item wishing to speak, again, up to two minutes per person. Patricia Garule, is that the correct pronoun, relate to me? And then Michael Valdez will be next.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Garule. Mayor Stanton, Vice Mayor Williams, and members of the council, good afternoon. Due to the strong sense of mission by Father Paul and the moral ownership authority of the established church, Old Sacred Heart Catholic Church will be returned to what it was founded to be, returned to its sacred use as intended by Father Albert Braun and the community that built it. Old Sacred Heart Catholic Church is a significant historical element of the city of Phoenix. This issue called for a cross-section collaboration. Thanks to the Department of Economic Security, Aviation Subcommittee, the diocese, mayor and city council, and the community for responding and playing a role in the bigger plan. By moving forward and beyond comfort zones and taking risks, the threat of losing this community iconic Catholic church was removed. Cultural heritage is what keeps us attached to our traditions and beliefs and symbolic spiritual life. Today, we celebrate the spirit of an honorable and great people in one of the oldest communities who contributed much to our great city. A remarkable variety of groups and individuals continue to make this a unique corner of the world. You have recognized the area characteristics and collectively preserved and memorialized the history for us, for our children, and those that succeed us. I further compliment the efforts to ensure that the full visibility of the church is maintained. There is much more to be done to realize the needs of this community and to continue to inspire and support the next generation, but I thank you very much, and I would like to thank you for preserving history. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for that important testimony. Michael Valdez, Valdezek's next, followed by, uh, Dr. Juan.
Thank you, city council members and mayor. My name is Michael Valdez, and, um, I'm here just to speak on the historical and cultural equity of this church. We all know that the history of Golden Gate, so I'm not going to get too much into the history of Golden Gate. What I do want to speak on is that this issue is very, very important, and it's not so simple as, as just, this is a church once a year, um, and that's it. There's more, there's more to it, I'm sure. This important issue is, it's too important just to, um, rush through this process. There's been a lot of work for the past thirty years, different entities, CPLC, the City of Phoenix Aviation Department, um, Braun Sacred Heart Center, these entities have been working for thirty-plus years in preserving the historical and the cultural significance. Golden Gate, um, is bigger than just one entity. It's bigger than just CPLC or Braun Sacred Heart Center. This represents the historical and cultural significance of, of many people. The church is the footprint we have. This is the historical footprint that we have left, um, from the, from the change that happened. We have many families, um, the veterans, the Wong's, the Tangs, the Fongs, the Arvisus, the Medina's, these are all families that come from this particular area that is documented. There are many people who have been working to preserve the documentation and capturing the history and the stories of the people that live in this unique area, because it is true, it is very unique, unique, the church is, is that footprint. I have for record, just for cultural and historical record, some of the work that has been done in this area for you guys to read at later times, I would like to submit these to city council and to the mayor for you guys to look back at, at a later time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And, um, so, so that's my message today. I am opposed to, um, item eighty-seven. I feel that there needs to be more discussion and dialogue so that we encompass all aspects of the church. This includes the cultural and historical equity and make sure we capture that in a respectful and a meaningful way. So, thank you for your time and, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you so much for that testimony. Dr. Juan.
Uh, Mayor and city council, I extend my sincerest thanks and appreciation for your diligence and foresight in allowing the Sacred Heart Parish to reestablish its oversight over the consecrated historic Sacred Heart Catholic Church, where, by the way, I made my first holy communion under Father Braun, and Patricia and I were married, okay? Just a little sidebar. I also extend my gratitude to the Aviation Subcommittee, Daniel Valenzuela, Vice Mayor Thelda Williams, Laura Pastor, Michael Nowakowski, for their support of the Father Albert Braun Veterans Memorial District Heritage Form of Honor Initiative approved and now part of the city Phase One Land Reuse Final Report, which basically covers where some of the things this gentleman was talking about, it's in this report, and I thank the city for that. In addition, thanks to Councilwoman Gallego for her friendly amendment on December thirteenth, and Councilwoman Pastor for extending the heritage trails in the land reuse east to Sixteenth Street, celebrating the rich culture and heritage and veterans with ties to the area. A special thanks also for guidance to, uh, Ms. Mackey and, and her office for helping us through this process. It was very new to us. Thank you for the guidance. Uh, one, another thanks is to the Diocese of Phoenix for also having the fortitude to, uh, go forward with this project, and I want to thank the folks that are here today representing the diocese. Finally, a tremendous thanks to Father Paul, who always, always challenged us to keep praying for this to happen. Thank you, Father Paul. Father Paul, you have enriched the community by your fortitude. Go ahead, go ahead. Father Paul, you have enriched the community by your fortitude in bringing back to life this sacred and historic treasure to the community and city of Phoenix. It is time to permanently take down the fence, yes, take down the fence and allow the spirit of its history to be free again. It's time for, for the bell to ring, to be heard throughout our great city.
Uh, we're only two minutes before speaker.
And, and all the way to Mesclero, New Mexico, for Father Braun lies with a big smile. Sacred Heart, ring your bell loud so the people know it's time for you to come home again. Thank you, city council, thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, how about Maria Sparelli, followed by Abe Arvisu?
Mayor, city council, my name's Maria Sparelli. I am the executive vice president of Chicanos Polacausa. It has been Chicanos Polacausa's privilege and honor to collaborate with the diocese, the parish, the Braun Sacred Heart Center for the Sixteenth Street and Buckeye Project. CPLC has been part of the Golden Gate community since its existence forty-nine years ago. We are neighbors, we have been there, we are part of the community. We are here to support the preservation, restoration of the historic Sacred Heart Church, as we have been since its inception. For the past thirty years, CPLC has been committed to continuing, working with the Braun Sacred Heart Center, the city, the diocese, the parish, um, as part, and continues in the future as part of a committee with regards to the planning, the development, the rehabilitation, and the preservation of the historic Sacred Heart Church. We are pleased that the diocese has committed to restore and preserve the church to its original glory, including returning, restoring, and preserving the original artifacts that are currently in the church, the two bells, three altars, the railings, the chandeliers, the mosaic, and all of the other church artifacts that are integral, um, and a historic part of the church for the community as a whole now and in the future, again, all in accordance with the laws, teachings, rites, rituals, and disciplines of the Roman Catholic Church. We are also pleased to support the Braun Sacred Heart Center's devoted efforts. For over thirty years, they were the first, they have been, um, to restore and preserve the historic Sacred Heart Church's legacy in honor and respect for the Golden Gate community that was displaced so long ago. Our community can rest assured that CPLC and the Braun Sacred Heart Center have taken and will continue to take all efforts for the historic Sacred Heart Church to be restored and preserved solely as a Catholic church in accordance, again, with the laws, teachings, rites, rituals, and discipline of the Roman Catholic Church now and in the future. And finally, as directed by the city council, the Braun Sacred Heart Center, the city, the diocese, and the parish have worked diligently as a group to get to the point where we are today. We have made great progress today. However, in the interest of time, we ask that the city council continue to direct the parties to continue to meet and finalize the definitive agreements that are mutually agreed upon by all parties, consistent with the spirit and the intent of preserving, rehabilitating the historic Sacred Heart Church. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that testimony.
May I ask a quick question?
Please, of course.
Just want to make sure I'm clear. Would you hope that we would vote on this today and ask the parties to continue to meet?
I'm here to, uh, do as the community, um, has asked, and there are certain items just to make sure that we preserve the church, because that's, was the community's request, that this church be preserved for now and, um, in the future, um, including all the artifacts within it in the future, um, for, um, the, the purposes as stated. So, we, we want to make sure that those are in there, we're willing to work with, you know, the commitment and the, the group that has been working in, in the, in the future. So, we, we want to finalize that. I have every, um, intent and understanding that that will be the case. We just want to make sure for the community's sake and, um, with the intent that that does, get agreed upon.
Would you like us to vote yes on this item today, or would you like us to delay it?
Um, you know what? I will delay that response, and, um, we're here to support the Braun Sacred Heart Center. They will be speaking next, and so we will support, uh, whatever the Braun Sacred Heart Center in its, um, sense, believes we should be doing.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, so the next one will be Mr. Abe Arvisu.
Uh, Mayor, council, staff, thank you for allowing me to speak today on this, as you can see, very, very important issue. My name is Abe Arvisu, and I'm here in the capacity as the chairman of the Braun Sacred Heart Center. For more than thirty years, the Braun Sacred Heart Center has protected the historic Sacred Heart Church. When the diocese could not, no longer keep it, the Braun Sacred Heart Center was created as a community's representative to protect and preserve the rich history of the church and the community, which my co-board member, Dr. Demas, will explain in more detail. The Braun Sacred Heart Center represents over a thousand members of the original Golden Gate community. The Braun Sacred Heart Center has lovingly watched over the church, cleaning it, ensuring it, maintaining it, preserving it, and taking care of it. The Braun Sacred Heart Center has coordinated with Catholic priests of all orders for over thirty years now for the famous annual Christmas mass. That, that mass brought all the people that were displaced by the city back together, and it just, it kept the spirit and the heart of Golden Gate alive, the community alive, and, and to make sure that it was not forgotten. The Braun Sacred Heart Center has helped facilitate and coordinate with Catholic priests of all orders, other holy sacraments at the church for Golden Gate families that still revere, remember, and call historic Sacred Heart their own. The Braun Sacred Heart Center and like-minded partners have submitted countless RFPs to the city to ensure the preservation and restoration of the church, never losing hope that the historic Sacred Heart Church would once again be brought to its former glory. It is my duty and my privilege to stand here today, representing the Golden Gate community and the Braun Sacred Heart Center, to make sure that the historic Sacred Heart Church is preserved and restored as I have done for the past thirty-two years. And with the support of some of you on the council from the nineties, you remember that, and the people sitting here in the audience. As caretakers for the historic Sacred Heart Church, we have asked the diocese, and the diocese has committed to the following, uh, as the, as the city council has required previously with respect to the historic Sacred Heart Church, the diocese will work with the Braun Sacred Heart Center, the city, and CPLC in a committee with regards to the planning, development, rehabilitation, and preservation of the historic Sacred Heart Church. As the community expressed during CPLC's community meetings, the diocese has committed to continue the annual Christmas mass, and upon completion of the needed repairs and the official reopening of the church, the diocese will offer, continue to offer masses, including funerals, to the faithful. The Braun Sacred Heart Center is requesting the diocese to specifically consider other special uses, including funerals, weddings, and other holy sacraments for original parishioners and their families, and the requests the Braun Sacred Heart Center may take from time to time in regards to the use of the church. All such uses in accordance with the laws, teachings, rites, rituals, and, and disciplines of the Roman Catholic Church. We have been working diligently with diocese and the parish to come to a mutual agreeable, acceptable understanding. The diocese and parish have committed to our continued discussions and considering the input of the Braun Sacred Heart Center with regards to these matters. Most importantly, the diocese has committed to restore and preserve the church to its original glory, including returning, restoring, and preserving the original artifacts that are currently in the church, the bells, the altars, the railings, the chandeliers, the mosaic, and all other church artifacts as an integral and historical part of the church for the community now and for the future. So, all, again, in accordance with the Roman Catholic Church's teachings and disciplines. And I, I provide a letter the diocese has provided today with regards to the diocese's commitments. But having devoted over thirty years to the restoration and preservation of the historic Sacred Heart Church, it is my duty to continue to preserve the church's legacy in honor and respect for the Golden Gate community that was displaced so long ago, and for Father Albert Braun, who helped bring us together. Our community can rest assured that the Braun Sacred Heart Center has taken and will continue to take all the efforts to, for the sacred, historic Sacred Heart Church to be restored and preserved solely as a Catholic church in accordance with all the teachings and disciplines of the Roman Catholic Church now and in the future. So, as directed by the city council, the Braun Sacred Heart Center, the diocese, the city, and CPLC have worked diligently to get the point we, to the point where we are today. We have made great progress to date. However, in the interest of time, once again, we ask that the city council direct the parties to continue to meet and finalize the definite, the definite agreements mutually agreed upon of all the parties with the spirit intent of preserving, rehabilitating, rehabilitating the historic Sacred Heart Church. We have one shot, and once it leaves the city and someone else takes it, if it isn't written in the rules, we could lose everything that's in there today that we have fought so hard for to save. We cannot, I cannot stand here, and numerous people sitting in the audience cannot stand here and allow thirty-two years of past parishioners, past parish council members to, to have this happen again. We were thrown to the winds, and some of you helped us by letting us stay, by having the church and letting us work, and here we are. CPLC came forward and was going to rehabilitate the church, turn it over to the Braun Sacred Heart Center, and then we were going to use it for everybody, including the diocese. But we're still at, we're still not there yet, and if you vote yes today, we're going to lose that opportunity. But if you vote no, then at least we can go back to the table. I, I'm, we're even willing to take a continuance. If you would continue this table to another meeting, we need to have it in writing, and the staff needs to make sure that that's done, and they can do it, so that we don't lose this again. I don't have another thirty-two years of life, neither do a lot of folks sitting out here, and it's not fair to us and the people that have died fighting this fight. So, I hope you would at least consider to continue this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Arvisu.
And I have that letter from the diocese.
Thank you so much. All right, and, uh, Mr. Arvisu went a little over, but that's because he had people donating time to him. Paul Moreno.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm here today to represent three generations of the community on where this church is located, and I just find it very important for me to be able to witness this historical event. I just feel like this is a dream come true, our community could come together every Sunday, and I strongly support item eighty-seven. Thank you for this dream, the parish member thanks you, and my family also thanks you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moreno. Uh, how about Pete Demas? Followed by Gerald Cormier.
Good afternoon, Mayor, city council people. Uh, my name is Pete Demas, I'm an historian, and I've been a member of the board of the Braun Sacred Heart Center since its inception. I, my job here is to kind of give a historical background, to kind of expand upon what the importance of this church is to everyone involved, okay? And I start in eighteen eighty-one with the formation of Saint Mary's Catholic Church that was built in La Vario there, uh, which was at Third and Monroe, property donated by Mexicanos, built by Mexicanos, serviced the majority of the community there. Nineteen fifteen, we have the new Saint Mary's Church. Unfortunately, nineteen fifteen is the time of the, uh, let's say, the highlights of the Ku Klux Klan of that time. The church was segregated, Mexicanos abajo, Mexicans downstairs, that was what the situation was, the community was outraged, and in turn, what we do- The community was outraged, and in turn, what we do is we form Immaculate Heart Church. That's why that church is there, you know? Nothing comes from nothing. The people in the neighborhoods still wanted a church close by. In nineteen thirty-eight, we have La Reunión Católica de Propaganda de Golden Gate, organized to have a chapel in Golden Gate, okay? And this is when their first mica was set up for this purpose. I should also mention that much of the leadership of Immaculate Heart at this time were made up of Golden Gators. So we have leadership already existing in this area. The movement for a chapel was interrupted by World War II, and you have the over-representation of men from the Varios in the military, where they go, they fight, they get awarded all kinds of medals for valor, they come back changed. They were heroes. In November of nineteen forty-five, they get together and form American Legion Post Forty-One, precisely to attack the segregation that was taking place in living conditions, in education, in public facilities. I might say that my dad was one of the five that met to organize Post Forty-One, so has a history for me. I've been a member for over thirty years now. Okay, and when Post Forty-One was formed, it got city council people elected, like Adam Diaz, who was a member of Post Forty-One, and several others. Post Forty-One pushed for the desegregation of our society, and that's one of the things that it's been known for. The efforts at Golden Gate continued, but there were a number of priests that came, and none of them fit the bill. There's some question, and maybe one of them took a little bit of money, you know? So it was, it was a trying time. And that's when Father Albert comes into the neighborhood, nineteen fifty-two, a hero of World War I, World War II. He has to prove he's serious to the community. And what we have is the right priest at the right time, at the right place. He helps organize community, brings it together, the synergy that takes place. That's when we have the coming together of what becomes Sacred Heart Parish. And you have chapels organized in places like Mary Magdalene for Cuatro Milpas and some of these other areas, so that the people are close to the place of worship. Sacred Heart was built by the Vistinos. They started with adobe that melted in the rain, not, not a good sign. And so what we end up having is an employee from the Phoenix Brickyard, Mr. Tony Hurdado, by the way, also a veteran, who provides a linkage to the yard to get the bricks that are going to be used to build the church. Father Albert gets the people to bring it in, brick by brick. That's what takes place there. These are parishioners who provide much of the expertise. For example, Mr. Alex Arvisu wired most of that church, electrician, okay? Father Albert was also a chaplain for Post Forty-One, and also the Arizona Department of the American Legion, the largest veterans' organization in the state. Out of Sacred Heart comes Sacred Heart School, Sacred Heart Head Start, which is, was an innovative idea at that time, the Senior Center, Saint Vincent de Paul. And also out of Sacred Heart comes permission to use parish facilities in support for efforts led by organizations such as Valle del Sol and Chicano por la Causa. And also from Sacred Heart comes the permission to use facilities at Santa Rita for Cesar Chavez's famous fast in Phoenix in nineteen seventy-two. But at the same time that Sacred Heart Parish was becoming a major force in the valley, Sky Harbor Airport was growing dramatically. And the other thing is that it became very important for the economic development of the valley. And for this, in order to protect its investment and to generate funding for the airport, Golden Gate and surrounding Varios had to go. And the means of removing the people was callous at best. I can let other people describe that situation. In other words, the truth was that the veterans and the historical cultural ties were considered unimportant, reflecting the attitudes of nineteen fifteen still existing at that time. Six thousand people were removed, and the city planned to eliminate everything that contained the community member, memory of Golden Gate, including the core of the community, including Sacred Heart Church. What you had here was the city not considering that church historic, including, including the city's Historic Preservation Office. They said it was not historic. But they ended up with some resistance. It was the Bron Sacred Heart Center that had to step forward to stop the demolition because the community demanded something there. And what takes place is the city council makes perfectly clear that a nonprofit organization has to come in and has to develop a museum and cultural center there at the church. And that's why the Bron Sacred Heart Center was formed, and that's why we designated buildings around there.
A couple of people donated time, but even then, we're beyond, well beyond the time. So if you finish up and then get our speakers.
Okay, I'll finish up right away.
Thanks so much.
Basically, what you have here is when we started working for the saving of the church, other communities came, organizations, American Legion Post Forty-One came forward, and as did the Arizona Department of the American Legion. They have been actually, uh, they have provided.
Oh, city clerk, would you please grab the information for Mr. Demas? Thank you.
Nineteen eighty-eight and two thousand, twenty seventeen, they have stayed, they want to work to establish a veteran museum there on the site with the Bron Sacred Heart Center. And I understand my time is over, but I must say that in this process, we have not had the opportunity to really look at this arrangement that's been put forward. It was basically dropped on us. And what we need is a continuation so that we can work in a friendly fashion with all the interested parties to get this thing done.
Thank you so much. Next speaker will be Gerald Cormier, followed by Dolly Agiri.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Gerald Cormier. I'm a resident of Phoenix now, and I represent the Bishop Grand John Council Number Forty-three Thirty-nine of Phoenix, and I'm currently the grand knight. My brothers-in-law are here, and I are here today to show that we support the efforts to retain old or historic Sacred Heart Church as part of the Sacred Heart Parish within the diocese of Phoenix. The church is an integral part of the neighborhood's history and culture, and remains an important part of that culture, not only to the parishioners of Sacred Heart who still live here, but also to those who have moved and remain members of the parish. As knights, excuse me, we participate in the various church events, such as the annual fiesta, monthly Sunday breakfast, and any other event that the, that the parish does have, but also in religious education programs presented. Some of us are registered members of the parish, as am I. The, to me, I, I look at it pretty simplistically. It was built as a Catholic church. It remains a Catholic church because it has not been consecrated. And I think that it should remain a Catholic church and given back to the diocese and, you know, the Sacred Heart Parish itself. I may not be a native of Phoenix. I am now a citizen of Phoenix and embrace the history and culture of my, of my new environment. We ask that you vote in favor of having Old Sacred Heart Church returned to the parish. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. How about Dolly Agiri? Ms. Agiri, followed by Antonio Hernandez.
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton and Phoenix City Council. I am a resident of Phoenix. I have been here all my life, sixty-two years. Went to Phoenix Union. Sacred Heart Church means a lot to me, so I really hope that we have your true support in passing this because the church belongs to the people who go to church, attend the church. While we appreciate everything that Abe and Chicano por la Causa has done to support our community, we still have had to defend ourselves as well to maintain our church. So we truly hope and pray that we will get our church back. As a member of the current Sacred Heart Parish, I have been there basically all my life as a Catholic and a supporter, and I believe God will prevail for us, one way or the other. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. How about Antonio Hernandez?
Mayor, city council, my name is Antonio Hernandez, and I humbly come here with just such joy and gratitude that item eighty-seven is up for consideration. I support it, and I hope you will too. Grew up in the area. Sacred Heart Church was a place where I went to mass with my mother, and also I served as an altar server and with my family. Now I still attend the parish. And your support in, I mean, you're familiar with the divergent views and the complexities, but you encouraged there to be dialogue and community to come together, and it was very inclusive in that process. So I thank you, Mayor, and the city council for your leadership on that. And also, I would just pray for your consideration. This means very, very much. And your vote of yes to support this would just be like Paul was saying, the dream come true. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Councilman Pastor.
I have a question for you. I have a question for you.
What, Mr. Hernandez?
You made a statement that you attend the church. Where do you attend the church?
Sacred Heart Church, yeah.
The address of the church that you attend.
The Twelfth Street and Buckeye Church.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That's all the cards wishing to speak. I have a few not wishing to speak on both sides of the issue. One person opposed, but available speaker requested, and I should have recognized you earlier. I did not know you were here. Mary Rose Wilcox, our former city councilwoman. And then you got demoted to the county after that. But the good old days, we're still here at City Hall. Of course, Mary Rose, please come forward. I apologize for not knowing you were in the audience earlier till I saw your card here. Good to see you.
That's okay. I debated speaking. I've been on that side of the table so much that it's kind of hard not to even say aye on some of the votes. But thank you for letting me come before you. My name is Mary Rose Wilcox, and I've been involved with this issue for decades. I was there, and we negotiated with the church, and the diocese did lead us by the Sacred Heart area. And at that time, a lot of the areas Pete Demas has said in his history had been devastated. But the one thing that hadn't is the church, and the church is a symbol for many people of the community and of the vibrant Hispanic community that was relocated but still lives in everybody's heart. I would like to just say that I think the motion and all the work that's gone into it is a very good one, but I think the request to continue is a good one also. I do think, and I know that Councilwoman Pastor is really trying to do a side deal that basically could be incorporated in, and hopefully, if you could continue for two weeks and come up with an agreement in paper with the diocese and Sacred Heart, that might satisfy everybody. I think the trust needs to be there, and for years, Braun, Father Braun's organization was there by itself. And I think that's where you see that people are skeptical. They want to make sure that the diocese and them can work together. And I think there's good people on both sides. So if a continuation, perhaps with a side agreement that could be run by city staff, and something that's in writing might help usher people that Sacred Heart will be used in the manner that it has been used, and also the diocese would have control of it, but there would be written guidelines that Bron Sacred Heart could also have. So with that, that's my two cents. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony and your longstanding leadership here on the city on so many community issues. Councilman, please, do you have a question?
So my response to Mary Rose is that I had asked if there was a signed, if all parties were in agreement with this item. And I think it was a week and a half ago, or I want to say two weeks, I meet a lot. At the time, I had heard that not everybody was in agreement. And so I had asked staff to go and figure it out. So this morning, this afternoon, and literally, before I walked up on this dais, I was getting calls regarding this. So I just want to make that clear and out there, and I would like to see a signed and written document of all parties agreeing, agreeing to the future of this land. So thank you.
Councilwoman, just if I can respond.
Please, of course.
I had heard that you were really trying to do that, and I admire that, because in my many years of elected office, you have to have something on paper for people to believe it. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Gil Arvisu, you have just two minutes, and that'll be the final speaker, and then there's a few cards on both sides of the issue, but they're not for speaking cards. Mr. Arvisu, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, my name is Gilbert Arvisu.
Oh, Ms. Mike, please.
Mic check?
There you go.
Okay. My name is Gilbert Arvisu. I'm an executive board member of the Bron Sacred Heart Center. I was going to come up here and be not as nice as my dad. You know, I think staff, specifically business and properties of the aviation department didn't provide sufficient community engagement. They said today that there were community meetings held in October of twenty seventeen, but that was for the December thirteenth date. From December thirteenth to now, there has been no community meetings. And so CPLC was required to have community meetings. Not too sure why the diocese wasn't. I'd also like to say that CPLC was willing to work with us. They were going to use the revenue from their development around the church to rehab the church and things like that. So we had a dance partner, as the way my dad likes to put it, and now there's a third dance partner, which is fine. We're willing to work with everyone and dance with everyone, but just today, we're not in agreement. Like I said, I think there just needs more community engagement. You've heard some of the community members speak today, asking for that. So although I would support no, because there hasn't been sufficient community engagement, I will come to the middle and say I'd support a continuance for this item. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Okay, and there are, let's see, about eight additional cards in favor of the proposal, about six additional cards opposed. Ms. Rodriguez, you're not wishing to speak. Are you in favor or opposed? Lydia Rodriguez. What's that? Are you in favor? Your card is unmarked.
I'm unmarked.
Okay. It'll, it'll be submitted for the record. Okay, so we have, we got a motion in favor. We have a second. Okay, so now I'll turn to the members of the council for any comments or questions before a vote. Councilor, or Vice Mayor, please.
My question is for staff. As you have negotiated, I guess is the word to use, with the diocese, did this conversation include preserving the artifacts and the items that were mentioned today? I mean, what type of agreement did you come to? And second, did you have community hearings?
Mayor, Vice Mayor Williams, we did discuss the artifacts that were inside the church and that they would remain with the church. So that was discussed at that time, and that is actually in the letter of intent in the agreement that is identified. As far as the community meetings, staff attended, as did CPLC, as the council directed us to hold community meetings, getting ready for the December meeting. And as we had those meetings, those community meetings, what kept coming up at those meetings was to have the church come back to being a church again. So we had the community meetings. Since that time, the, we've been meeting with the diocese, Chicano por la Causa, and the Bron Sacred Heart Center to come to a conclusion where everyone was in agreement. So those community meetings were had. There were approximately sixty-five people at those two community meetings that were talking about wanting the church to come back to being an active church.
Thank you, and I'm, I'm very pleased that your church is coming back.
All right, Councilman Alkowski, and then Councilman Pastor. Councilman?
Mayor, for me, this is very sensitive, and to me, it's, it's holy ground. I was a part of the youth group there where Jerry Kostrow was the youth minister, and really got me involved in the diocese and youth ministry, and, and to me, it's a special place. And for the last three years, we've been talking about, what do we do with Sacred Heart? And finally CPLC stood up and said, hey, I'd like to do something about this. Then all of a sudden, the diocese came to the table also, and then... of a sudden, the diocese came to the table also, and then the conversation started. And for years, for the last 30 years, the Bronn Sacred Heart Society has been keeping the church alive and making sure that everybody knows that the church is still there and telling the story of the four communities that were basically displaced because of the expansion of the airport. And people are still upset with the city, and people are still upset with the diocese. But I believe that now that we can sit around the table and start to find that common ground, and I believe we're there. I believe that the diocese is coming in good faith to making sure that they restore the church to where it was before, and that it's open to the community, and that there's going to be some special services there. And it's, I don't know if it's going to be every Sunday, but I know that they've made a commitment for Christmas mass and other special masses. But saying all that, I'm not really familiar to what the agreement is. I know what our staff has told me, but there's other things that are being brought up here. And out of the goodness of my heart, I can't stand up here and really make a decision either way. I'd like to be a part of the conversation. I'd like to be a part of the solution. I'd like to have one more meeting with our staff, with the diocese, the Bronn Sacred Heart Society, and bring everyone together to really come up with a plan. I know that some people believe that the Bronn Sacred Heart Society should have it, and that there should be a museum and all that. But there's some legal matters that we need to talk about that that's not possible. And I know that there's some trust factors with the diocese that I believe that once we sit down, we have that conversation, things can work out. So I really, I'm asking my colleagues that I'd like to be a part of one more conversation, and I'd like to make a substitute motion to maybe continue this till our next council meeting. And I'd like to see that the council member of that district, which is Kate, and I know Laura Pastor also is representing individuals that used to live in that community in her district, that the three of us be present for that meeting too. And let's just make it, let's come up with a win-win situation for everyone. And that's my recommendation. I don't know if I have a second to continue it, and that the three of us be a part of that conversation.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. It's a procedural motion, not a substantive motion, so it's not a substantive motion. But the motion on the table right now is to continue this item. There is a second on that. Councilman Pastor?
So I went back to the minutes of the motion. And it's a little unclear, because what it says is Vice Mayor Pastor made a motion to approve item 71 with the understanding that the agreement would be consistent with the area's land reuse plan as previously approved by mayor and council. And then we added the language that this item be adopted as amended, that the project will participate in the heritage trail per the council approval land reuse proposal. So when this motion came about, it was about, I want to say in the 90s, no, Phil wasn't here in the 90s, was he? It was under Mayor Gordon when there was a deal done. I don't remember the exact year, where, I don't even remember the doctor's name.
Oh, Patrick Shingchong, yep.
Patrick Shingchong, and he had all the area and everything included. Then the dialogue that happened on December 13 was about the three acres. And we went into the dialogue about the three acres that needed to be included in this whole CPLDC motion. Then we had a dialogue and continued a dialogue to say, once we heard everybody to say, you know what, there's three parties that are interested in this. There are three parties that have to come together and work on this and come to agreement. And so at this moment, I don't think the three parties are in agreement. And that's why I second the motion for a continuance, because I do think that we can get to that space by June 6, our next council meeting. As Councilwoman Marion was stating earlier, the city purchased the property. We maintained the property, but also Bronn Sacred Heart, for the last 15, 20 years, has also provided funding to preserve pieces of Sacred Heart. So there is some disconnect happening. And I think it's, I think if the three council members come into play, I think we can get to where we need to get to. So I'm just going back to all my minutes and all the transcripts, and the transcripts are not as detailed as I wanted them to be in order to be very clear on what the motion was made. I just feel like I don't, this has nothing, for me, it's about a community, a community that I know, a community that I was a part of, a community that got dismantled, a barrio that was back in the heyday, the place to be and the people to be in the Hispanic community was live and vibrant, that got destroyed, really. And the one thing that lands, that stands there, that's representative, that's a representative of that community is Sacred Heart Church. Now, I understand, you know, when Bishop O'Brien put the property up for sale, and the diocese received a million dollars for the property, and no longer was at full capacity a church, but mass continued, and there were artifacts in there. I think we have to come to terms with that and figure out how do we assist in the conversation with the community to get to the happy, to get to the win-win. I don't feel comfortable voting on something that is not there. So I'm asking my colleagues to give us the time that we need for the council people that need to be there, be there, and have the conversation with the community. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And I'll turn to
Mayor?
Other members of the council. Councilman Cecilio, please, jump right in.
Yeah, I'll be very quick. I'm going to support the motion for the continuance. You know, it brings up, I got to tell you what I am happy about. A lot of this, if not all of it, is being done in public. You know, you brought up, or one of the individuals brought up what happened with Phil and all that. That was a horrible deal. It was an insider deal. It was a deal that was done behind closed doors by private phone calls. All that stuff was bad. The city of Phoenix has moved past that, so I want to give credit to staff on that and hope that this kind of stuff and this kind of shenanigans don't ever happen again. But the fact of the matter is, this is being done in public. I'm fully supportive of the three members getting together. It's very reasonable to do that. I mean, it involves all three members. I think it's actually a very nice way to handle this thing. And I'm going to be supportive of the motion.
All right, thank you very much. I'll now turn to other members of the council. Councilman Gago, it's in your district.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor. This has been one of the most emotional issues that I have worked on in my time on the Phoenix City Council. It deals with issues of people's home and their faith, so intensely personal issues. First, I want to say that we've come a long way. We have stakeholders who had very strong emotions and still do, who are now very close. It's exciting to be at a point where the Moreno family is supportive of something we're doing at the city, because we've disappointed you a few times. And I want to thank Juan and Patricia as well, who've been pushing us and pushing us, as well as the church. I think we're almost there with CPLC as well. So I came into this meeting thinking that the local stakeholders, the church, and CPLC were all in agreement. But I'm supportive of a continuance if we can get everyone to the same place. I do want to be clear that I believe that the Catholic Church is the right entity to operate Sacred Heart. I've spent a lot of time, we've had meetings for airport issues in variety of contexts, and I've gone door to door and spoken with the neighbors who live near the church. I had one really touching moment where a woman took my hands and said, please return the church to us. Please bring us back the Catholic Church. I feel very strongly that the people who live in the community have told me that they want the Catholic Church at this site. There is incredibly complicated history that we at the city of Phoenix have no chance in solving, and we want to honor the history. And we can't make everything right, but we should do the best that we can. A lot of people have really made this property their life's work. I want to thank the Arvizo family and Abe in particular for his longtime support and investment. We've come a very, very long way. And it would be a singular achievement for this council if we can get everyone in support. So I want to thank Councilman Noakowski for trying to suggest a way forward and keep in my office involved in this. This is a huge priority. This project means so much to so many people, and we want to honor our history. So supportive of the continuance. But I've heard over and over again from stakeholders, we need to get a solution, and I look forward to getting that on June 6.
All right, thank you very much. Any other comments by members of this council? All right, so the motion is to continue this item. There is a second. Back, any final comments before we take a vote on the motion to continue? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, next item on the agenda is item?
Item 93, and I move approval.
93.
Mayor, I have a comment on this one.
All right, so item 93. Is there, so there was a motion, a second? Is there a second on 93?
Second.
Second. Councilman Gago, please.
Thank you. Item 93 is an acquisition of property at 3121 East Washington Street, so it is property in the vicinity of the airport. I think if we've seen one thing from the previous item, that airport property acquisitions have a real impact on the community. As the councilone representing the area, I hear regularly from my constituents and business owners about how we manage our property in the area. And we've gotten regular crime reports from the police department about the calls we have on occupied property in the airport area. So we need to do a good job managing our existing assets. On this particular one, Councilman Noakowski had requested some information about the purchase price in the area. It appears that our appraiser believes the property doubled in value in two years, so I have concern about the price at which we are purchasing this property. We're looking at $82 per square foot in the real estate comps I've seen in the area. We see $61, $69, and different prices. So I would like to have more information to see why this one has doubled, because we're seeing properties on the market for more than 900 days. So I'm not going to be supporting this item. So I would welcome a continuance to get more information. So move to continue to the June 6 meeting.
All right, motion to continue.
Second.
We have a second to June 6. Any comments on a continuance?
And Mayor, I will be supporting whatever Councilman Gago does on this in the future as well.
Thank you, Councilman. We've gotten, focused on property values today.
Yeah, exactly. And I trust your judgment on this case.
Thank you.
All right. Any additional comments? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda is item number?
96.
96. This is a proposed contract award for South Central TOD Business Assistance and Land Use Planning Services Grant. Is there a motion on 96?
I move approval. Second.
There's a motion and a second. This went before, Vice Mayor's went before your subcommittee and was passed unanimously before the subcommittee?
Yes, and it was thoroughly vetted at that time.
Excellent. We have a, let's see, a couple cards on the item. Kimber Lanning, and then Tommy Espinoza. I guess that's it wishing to speak. Ms. Lanning, good to see you.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for your time. I'm here just to speak to the qualifications of the team. First, I want to say how much of an honor it is to work with these eight other entities. Together, we form a very diverse and varied background with a bunch of different skill sets that will be valuable to the business community in South Phoenix. We have a wide variety of backgrounds and leadership on the team that are focused on everything from technical assistance to handling business assessments, to boots-on-the-ground networking opportunities, and a wide variety of services that we can bring the community. I think one thing to keep in mind as you face this vote today is how important the cultural heritage and history is in South Phoenix, and how much of that is on the shoulders of the small businesses in that community. As a small business owner myself, I have survived light rail construction twice. It's not easy, and I encourage you to direct these funds into the South Phoenix community so these services can be delivered ahead of light rail construction, certainly through light rail construction, so that these businesses can be successful in the long run. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your testimony. Tommy Espinoza.
Mayor San, City Council. First of all, I just want to point out that the group has come together. It's probably in the history of the, that I've been involved, I won't use dates, but probably more like 50 years of involvement, a diverse group and really understanding the community that we serve in South Phoenix. Furthermore, I just want to point out that as we're working on Plaza de las Culturas over the last five years, one of the contracts that we put out was with Promis Arizona, which has been highlighted by Harvard University as one of the best studies and one of the best strategies as it lays out for community development in South Phoenix. So I support this and also point out that Raza Development Fund is very actively involved in the South Phoenix community and putting together any support that that group may need, either financially or technically. So we support the approval of the contract. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks so much for your testimony and your leadership. Let's see, in favor of the item, available to speak if necessary, Mary Rose Wilcox, Javier Espinoza, Rosie Lopez, Connor Deschmiker. Are you still here, Connor? All right, anyone else wish to provide testimony on item 96? We have a motion in favor.
Aye.
And a second. Any comments by members of the council?
Mayor?
Councilman, please.
I will, I will not be supporting the motion to approve. This is a group that has absolutely no experience on a very sensitive subject of those business owners. This is a live-or-die scenario for a lot of those business owners that are going to be in that area. But more importantly, well, just as importantly, they, this group that is receiving this $2.4 million has proven in the past to be anti-police, proved to be anti, proved and pushed forward in anti-police rhetoric at the city of Phoenix. I'm just not going to be supporting them. They have no experience, and all this is, is a political insider deal payoff to a group that has done nothing but promote anti-police rhetoric at the city of Phoenix. And I'm not going to be supporting this at all.
All right, thank you very much, councilmember. Any other comments by members of our city council? Please, Councilman Pastor, you have comments or questions, maybe as relates to Councilman Cecilio's comments?
I'm just a little taken back, because in our subcommittee, we discussed a number of things, and I asked for qualifications, and I asked specifically where the qualifications and who had the qualifications. So I'm just a little taken back by the comment. But okay. and who had the qualifications. So I'm just a little taken back by the comment, but okay.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments regarding the contract award for South Central Transit Oriented Development Business Assistance and Land Use? Councilwoman Noakowski, then Councilwoman Gago, please.
Mayor, I'm going to support this, but it doesn't mean that I support the two lanes. I'm still supporting the four lanes. I believe that the businesses are being affected. We've already seen some major businesses that have closed down, sold, and some others that have been there for, ever since I was born, that are saying that if it is, if we build the light rail and there's only two lanes, that they'll be closing down. So you all have a lot of work ahead of you, and we need to continue to figure out a happy compromise for our community. But I will be supporting this item.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Gago, please.
Thank you. Mayor Stanton, I was able to join you as we went and met with the FTA to advocate for this funding. It was very exciting for us when we got the maximum award of anywhere in the country. We really appreciate the support and the ability this grant will give us to do an even better job than we have in the past for our stakeholders. I'm very glad that we have Local First and Kimber Lanning, who's lived through this. Our goal is to do better every time, and we've had a lot of innovation so far where we've learned from past projects about what we could do better, how we can speed it up, how we can better communicate. I was proud that this council put additional money into business assistance. Construction of any type is never easy, and we don't want to sugarcoat it, but hopefully we can use transit-oriented development as a tool to make this project benefit the people who are already in the community. We have a lot of stakeholders who are in the community, who live right on this line, including Gould Evans is right in the project area as well and have great expertise in the technical sides of this. So I look forward to supporting this motion.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Stark, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Besides going to the Transportation Infrastructure Subcommittee, it also went to the Citizens Transportation Commission, I believe, and that was an eight-to-two vote, correct? And I just wanted to put in a good word, as my background, you know, is in planning and development. I was planning director. I worked many years with Gould Evans. They're a great firm. They're an established firm. Forty years, I think, they've been in business. They're a national firm. They do great work, and they understand business development. So I think this, they really did put together a great team in this R.I.P.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other comments by members of the council? I trust Vice Mayor Williams and the members of the subcommittee that they thoroughly vetted this and made the right selection for this very important work of business assistance during the critically important development phase of light rail, as well as the important decisions and recommendations from the community as it relates to land use. So I do appreciate the great work, Councilwoman Williams, that you did. And Councilwoman DeCecio, on the issue of a political payoff, I don't, I know you're not suggesting that Councilwoman Williams was a beneficiary through her recommendation of subcommittee of any type of political payoff?
No, what I'm suggesting is that this is an insider group, and this is a total political insider payoff to a group that has shown nothing but anti-police rhetoric throughout the path, and I think it's just deplorable. We're going to be giving them $2.4 million in taxpayer money.
I think very much. I wanted the Vice Mayor, obviously, it's a serious allegation that you're making. I want the Vice Mayor the opportunity to defend the work of her subcommittee, which unanimously supported the recommendation.
Well, first of all, I have to say, it can't be talking about me. I'm very pro-police. So the committee, we asked some hard questions, and I know Councilwoman Pastor really drilled into this, and we recognized that it is a unique group, but we looked at the experience and the challenge they have. This is a very long segment of light rail, new. It will have a significant impact on all those businesses, and most of them are small businesses. And the importance of getting started early is extremely important. We have learned that from experience, especially for a small company or business that has never had to really market themselves upfront, get involved with the community, do that type of planning. Kimberly said it best. She's gone through it twice. She knows the challenges they face, and it will be tremendous opportunity for them if they listen, they participate. I think it will be very, very successful. And I think the questions that were asked at subcommittee confirm that. And I am comfortable moving ahead with this. I think it is beneficial for the city, but especially for the people along that southern route.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Pastor, please.
I'm just unclear of the accusations. Our, the warden or the final proposal went to Promise Arizona and Gould Evans, so I'm unsure of the anti-police, anti-everything. I don't...can someone let us know?
I don't know. The suggestion was a political payoff, and I wanted the chair of the subcommittee the opportunity to do...
I'm unsure of who appears getting the political payoff, so I would like to know, only because we have ethics and everything else to, that deals with this. And so if we have to involve the Attorney General, we will, but I don't think it's anyone else.
Let's do it. This is a political group that has been...I'm sorry, interrupted. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Obviously, Councilwoman, the chair of the subcommittee made the point that...
This is what they've done in the past. They've literally come down. They promoted anti-police rhetoric at the City of Phoenix, and I'm just not going to support it. This is a total payoff to this group. They have no experience in this field at all, especially with a group of business owners that have been crying and needing the support for a better use, a better communication with the City of Phoenix on the light rail. I'm just not going to support it.
All right, so...
That's fine. I was just, the suggestions that some of us were doing something illegal. I just wanted to get that on the record and be very clear.
All right, so again, the suggestion is the, one of the organizations is quote-unquote anti-police. I wanted anti-police and somehow political payoff. I wanted the chair of the subcommittee, Vice Mayor Williams, the opportunity to respond because it is a very serious allegation that she and somehow, or and the members of the subcommittee were beneficiaries of a quote-unquote political payoff. She did respond, obviously, made clear that she, of all people, would not be supportive of any organization that is quote-unquote anti-police, but we wanted to make sure we got that on the record. Or any other comments by, Councilwoman Waring, please?
So I'm voting no, but I'm voting no because I don't like light rail. I know that doesn't make me the most popular guy up here, but just a little levity there, but I am against light rail. So normally, I might vote for the business assistance, but we had quite the discussion a month or six weeks ago or wherever it was. I can't remember if it's some of the same people are in the audience now or a different group, but there was a lot of discussion about what was mentioned earlier about the two lanes versus the four lanes. Do I think this will hurt businesses down there? I do. It sounds like some people have experience with this and have survived. Find the light rail experience, but a lot haven't. There's no reason to, I think the words were belabor the point from an earlier item, but I think it's still going to be two lanes. That problem will still remain. This money will not solve that problem. So I'm going to vote no.
All right, so Councilwoman Waring is not supporting the motion, but is not alleging a political payoff. All right. All right, fair enough.
Did you suggest that to...
I'm usually the bad guy because I'm against light rail.
Yeah, exactly.
Can I just stick with that?
Just checking.
I like to stay in my lane.
All right.
I don't know about that.
No transit pun intended with the stay in the lane.
I don't know about that.
So it's a two-lane or a four-lane that you're staying in?
Or is it a bicycle lane?
All right, so any other comments by members of the subcommittee? So the recommendation is in favor, a staff recommendation. It was unanimous vote of the subcommittee. We've had many members of the council have a chance to give their opinions.
I just, I had one question for you. Does this conversation make you glad it's your last meeting?
I'm sorry, you don't have to answer that. I love every city councilman. All right, so the motion is in favor. There is a second. Any final comments by members of this council? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Gago.
Yes.
Noakowski. Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams.
Come on, Waring.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion passes on a seven-to-vote vote before our city council. Next item on the agenda is item 197. Excuse me.
You can definitely know I'm going to move approval on this one.
Second.
Motion in favor of 97. There is a second. How many cards on 97?
Mayor, just want to congratulate the Vice Mayor for her longstanding work on this item and moving it forward. She has been a huge champion for this project.
And thank you for all your support.
Motion and a second in favor of moving forward.
Mayor, I have a question.
With the Metro Center line, for lack of a better term. Councilwoman Noakowski, please.
Can I have staff up here just for some questions? I'll be supporting it, but I just wanted some questions asked.
Maria Hyatt, our transportation director, is coming forward along with Jesus Epión.
So this, this design, it's going from the existing northwest, which is on 19th Avenue and Dunlap, to where exactly?
Mayor, members of the council, the light rail extension will go from the current terminus at 19th Avenue and Dunlap. It will head west on Dunlap, north on 25th Avenue, west on Mountain View Road, and travel over I-17, and then end at Metro Center Mall on the east side of the Metro Center Mall property, on the west side of I-17.
And will it be in any of our major roadways?
It will. Mayor, members of the council, it will travel over I-17, yes.
And will it reduce any lanes from four lanes to two lanes?
Mayor, members of the council, no, it will not.
And the reason being?
From my understanding of the design so far, Councilwoman Noakowski, is there is available right-of-way along Dunlap, along this particular area, where we are able to widen the configuration without taking out any buildings. From the plans I have seen so far and driving the area, it is mostly sidewalk and landscaping that will be impacted, not buildings.
And the only reasons I'm asking these questions is if I approve this, I vote yes, which I am, I just need to have those answers for those individuals that live on South Phoenix and are asking those questions that, why is it on the northwest extension they're able to keep four lanes or sometimes even extend four lanes to five lanes, and we're reduced to two lanes? So that's the reason I'm asking these questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments or questions? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Five minutes later, I'm still against light rail.
I know. I'll vote for Waring, no.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion passes seven to two. Next item on the agenda is item number 115. Item number 115 is Skytrain Stage Two Construction Manager at Risk Contract. Is there a motion on 115? Vice Mayor.
I move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any cards on that item? Any comments or questions by members of the council? Roll call. DeCecio.
No.
Gago.
Yes.
Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring.
Not wild about this either. No.
Williams.
Yes.
Mayor Stanton. Yes. Was that eight-one? Seven-to-two. Seven-to-two. Also, okay, that one also passes seven to two. Item number 147 is the final item on today's agenda. Item 147 is a citizen request, consideration of citizen petition as it relates to national health insurance. Are there cards on that item? We have a series. Vice Mayor, do you have a motion on that item?
Mayor, I move to deny this. This is outside the city's jurisdiction.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'll now turn to members of the public who have comments on this item. Leonard Clark, do you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. I like to go last usually, but I'll take first, and it's hard now because I can't overdo, I can't outdo Councilwoman Sal DeCecio. He's outdone me today, so...but I am disappointed. I would hope that you would conscientiously consider backing Medicare for All, and as we all know, Mayor, it's going to be the last meeting, so I'm not going to be able to give you a hard time unless I can find some cheap rates to fly to Washington, D.C. to attend your meetings. But anyways, we all know that you have not come out yet to back Medicare for All, so, you know, the person you're replacing doesn't believe in it. She won't back it. So it's a human right, and there are many citizens in Phoenix. It's very germane because of the fact that you have many people here, children, adults, working adults who work hard, who cannot afford, even with the former President Obama's good efforts to try to get people covered, that still can't afford medical insurance, where the last industrialized, major industrialized nation not to have it. Germany, their industry, their steel industry, they are doing great. They are thriving. We are the fifth-largest city in the United States of America. Your moral pronunciation on this by saying, "Yes, we believe in this. We endorse Medicare for All," would send a strong message across the country. So, "Hey, it's your last time." Come on, Mayor Stanton, but I know you can't, okay. But anyways, I'm going to find a way to fly to Washington, D.C. because I've got to attend your council, your committee meetings. It'll be hard, but they probably won't let me in like they do here. By the way, thank you for letting me talk. They won't let me do it. This is the legislature. I will say that for you, Mayor Stanton. You've always allowed me to talk, and somebody allows me to talk, well, somehow there's got to be some good in them. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clark, for that testimony. You know, it's been, as long as I've been mayor, for better or worse, I think it's generally worked for the city, whether it have been proposals for resolutions or citizen petitions on areas outside of the jurisdiction of the City of Phoenix, and as a general rule, we have not moved forward with those, even as well-intended as the proposals may be. How about Benjamin Fong?
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. I was the one who introduced the citizen petition last meeting, and I could see from the agenda today that you were probably going to reject it based upon how it was agendized. I certainly understand that a city council does not have the power to enact something like single-payer healthcare, but the petition does not ask that the council change federal law, but merely that it affirm that we cannot address our healthcare woes with anything but a single-payer system. This is not really an unusual thing to do. City councils weigh in on issues of national concern very often, and the Philadelphia City Council actually recently passed a proposal similar to mine around Medicare for All. The example of Philadelphia is actually instructive for a few reasons. Philadelphia and Phoenix, as you know, are both have about 1.6 million residents. They have similar city budgets, about $4 billion a year, and a study revealed that Philadelphia would save $539 million a year if a Medicare for All system were passed. Given the similarities between the two cities, one might expect that Phoenix would save a similar amount. This means that a single-payer healthcare system is very much a local issue. It's about covering the roughly 650,000 people in Maricopa County without health insurance while saving the city an extraordinary amount of money. If the council is not going to support the petition today, and it seems like it's not, I would ask at the very least that it allow a study to be completed of just how much money Medicare for All would save the city before we decide it's not a local issue. I have a basic worksheet here for the council to review that would allow us to determine just how much the city would save, and I asked for the permission to work with the city to fill it out. So I'm requesting, I'm not sure if this is actually the right motion, continuance on this for two months just to figure out how much it would save the city.
All right, thank you very much. City Clerk will receive that document from you. Thank you very much.
Mayor?
Oh, Councilwoman DeCecio, please.
Yeah, in reading the petition, it's clear that this is just a statement of support. The City of Phoenix has done this in the past. They've literally put forward issues that they want to support at a national level, whether it's on immigration or anything else. This has happened before, so I don't want this individual to feel or believe that this is outside of our jurisdiction when in fact it is. I mean, councils and governments throughout government, I mean, throughout the state have always issued statements of support, even though it doesn't enact anything. Now, I'm not supportive of this, but I just want to make sure that we talk about what is in front of us today, and it's a statement of whether or not the city should be supportive of Medicare for All or not. And I think that's a very simple statement, and I'm not going to be supportive of it because... And I'm not going to be supportive of it because I don't believe that way, but I want to make sure that this individual realizes that that is the, that is the point that's being forward today, is whether or not the city of Phoenix is going to back this in the group or not.
Thank you very much. Margot Thomas? And then followed by Devin Howard?
Mayor, city council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. This is a really emotional topic for me. I was recently diagnosed with Crohn's, and it's given me a new perspective. I've always been in favor of single payer or Medicare for All, but when you have a chronic illness where your life depends on whether you get care or not, I've had to change doctors, I've had to change insurance companies, and each change, I've had to start the process of pre-authorizations, or whatever each company wants to call it, delaying my care. Just a little over a month ago, I had surgery removing a portion of my bowel, and I will forever in the back of my mind, knowing that this is a progressive disease, wonder if I had had the care I deserved from the beginning, would I have lost a portion of my intestines? And so, I think that it's easy to say it's outside of your scope, but I imagine all the people who are in my shoes, and I ask that you at least consider voting, and so we can see where you guys stand, and just imagine the voice you would give to those of us in a situation like mine, and it's not even, I mean, I have a chronic illness, but it doesn't matter whether, you know, you've got emphysema because you smoked, or whatever has happened to you, you deserve the best care, and we're not getting it. We spend the most and have the worst care of any industrialized nation. So, I ask that you consider adding your voice to those of us who are for this, and making people, you know, across the state, take notice and maybe think of this where they might not otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Devin Howard?
Mayor Stanton and Phoenix City Council, thank you so much for hearing our citizen's petition today, requesting your vocal support of a Medicare for All system, such as Bernie Sanders' Senate Bill 1804, and Keith Ellison's H.R. 676 in the House. Implementing a single-payer health care system federally would have obvious local effects on your constituents in Phoenix. This is why we implore you to not simply kick the can down the road and proclaim this issue out of your jurisdiction. City council members are not and should not be unable to comment on federal legislation, and in fact, it would be remiss for you not to do so, given the impact that passing Medicare for All would have on your constituents. Your symbolic support of a universal health care system would save the average family almost $6,000 a year in unforeseen health care expenses, and would go a long way in garnering attention to Medicare for All and really moving the needle on this issue. As elected representatives for the people of Phoenix, you have an obligation to act in our best interests. I urge you to listen to the demands of Phoenix residents as we add our voices to the majority of Americans nationwide that support a single-payer health care system. Since October, I have been involved in a Medicare for All canvassing campaign where we knock on our neighbors' doors and listen to their health care woes under our patchwork for-profit health care system. We have met single mothers who cannot afford insurance for their young children, we have met individuals who cannot afford co-pays for regular preventative care and prescription drugs. We have listened to people who bear the incredible burden of fearing an impossible choice between a lifetime of medical debt and prompt treatment for a medical emergency. They fear this every day. They are your constituents, their needs are not being met, and they deserve to be heard. Please have the courage to vote on this petition in favor of Medicare for All, or at the very least allow a study to be conducted that would study the effects that a Medicare for All system would have on the city of Phoenix. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Mayor, may I ask your question?
Councilman DeCiccio, please.
To the lady that was just here, one of the things I've noticed is that, like, I'm definitely not a progressive, as you would talk, but I was a socialist in college, I have to tell you that. I've become more libertarian. But what I've seen is that people talk a progressive agenda, but then when the council and the politicians vote on it, they always come up with a reason, and I think this lady, this woman that was just here, pointed out the dichotomy that occurs at political events and political councils and political governments throughout the state, throughout the country. People talk to talk, but when it comes down to even just showing a level of just support, they will never do that, and that is what's occurring. At some point, the people on, you know, that are pushing an agenda that they believe to be the right agenda need to realize who's saying what and doing what.
All right, is that a just comment, Councilman DeCiccio? All right, we lost him. Hopefully he'll have the opportunity to get back on the phone. Ms. Talia Fuentes, followed by Taylor Hines, followed by Ken Canagos?
Good afternoon, council, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in approval of Medicare for All, also known as universal health care. When we enter politics as candidates, we say that every vote matters, but when elected, we watch as they treat their votes on these chamber floors as bargaining tools for future elections or the next rung on the political ladder. As a candidate for federal office, I have personally experienced being asked by the establishment elite to not support a Medicare for All program. Many members on this board have ambitions for other elected positions. It's important that the public have the opportunity to understand if you will appease the establishment elite, or what's best for the people of Phoenix and Arizona. Personally, as a working-class mother, I am protected by the Arizona health care cost containment system. I am so incredibly thankful that I do not currently have to stress about what I would do if myself or my son experienced a medical emergency. However, my friends and family without children are not as fortunate. The majority of Americans support and want a Medicare for All system. They want their communities, from children to great-grandparents, to be protected. Arizona has many programs that could be utilized or expanded upon to achieve such a goal. As an elected official, your voices have power and can energize change. I hope you will harness these privileges and stand against the establishment elite who would deny us a Medicare for All system. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you very much.
May I ask, did you just say you are a candidate?
That is correct. I was the first federal Democratic candidate to file with the Secretary of State's office for Congressional District Nine.
So you are just turning this forum into a political debate? I really resent that. I just want you to know.
In comment to your statement, Medicare for All, this is, you are political officials, you are in a political sector, so yes, this is a political issue. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mayor, she has the right to use this as a forum because everybody else does. I mean, the elected politicians that are sitting on the dais have done that for years, and the public has the right to use it as a forum and a way, as a vehicle, to be able to say what they want to say, when they want to say it, and how they want to say it.
All right, thank you very much, Councilman. Taylor Hines?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council members. I believe this is very much a local issue. As health insurance costs quickly outpace wages, almost 1 million Arizonans, hundreds of thousands in Phoenix, are left without coverage and live under the constant fear of an unexpected medical emergency. What we're asking today is not for the mayor or city council to influence federal policy, but to signal their support for a measure that would improve both their constituents' health and financial security. In September of 2017, the Arizona Democratic Party voted to support Medicare for All, so I would especially urge the Democrats on the council and the Mayor Stanton to affirm their party's position on this issue. Furthermore, it is estimated that its implementation could save a city of this size over $500 million a year, so at the very least, I would urge you to pursue an investigation of just how much money Medicare for All would save the citizens and city of Phoenix, not to mention how many lives could be spared. Having personally talked to hundreds of local residents about their health care struggles, I know from experience that our broken system concerns everybody. Mayor and city council members, I ask you to show your constituents that you care about their health by supporting Medicare for All. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Ken Canagos?
Good afternoon, Mayor Stanton and city council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. My name's Ken Canagos. Oh, that's not right. Kenegus is how it's pronounced. But I'm a registered nurse. I've been a nurse for over 40 years, and the stories that have been brought before you today, I've seen hundreds a phone. And I want to also emphasize to you that this is not just a symbolic vote. This is something that affects the city budget. You have many employees that you're providing health insurance for. When we take the numbers that we need to get to look at what the savings would be under a Medicare for All system, that's where that money comes from. It would allow employees to pay much less for their own health care, because there would be no co-pays, no deductibles, they wouldn't be paying premiums, and it will leave money in the city's budget that could be directed toward the many other necessary projects that I'm sure come before you and bedevil you all the time. You know, this has been done all over the country. The cities that have already approved it include Chicago, Detroit, San Francisco, Boston, Baltimore, Austin, Texas, Pittsburgh, Seattle, Philadelphia, and over 40 other local governments. So, you know, it's not a matter of, I would say, you know, this is, I don't want you just to approve it and say, "Well, that's what we did." I want you to lobby. The city lobbies for its needs. So, let us do a study, give us access to the budget people that we need to speak to to get the proper numbers as was sent before you, and then you'll see that this is something that the city should be lobbying for out of its own self-interest, in addition to the fact that it's a moral imperative. So, you know, and realize that as of now, over half the Democrats in the House of Representatives are endorsing Medicare for All. This issue is coming forward, and it's going to be with us until we get it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. That's all the testimony cards I have. Does anyone else here wish to provide testimony on the city council on the citizen petition? Councilman Pastor?
Mayor, I don't know the answer to this, so the question to you is, or to staff, is can we vote on issuing a proclamation in support of Medicare for All? Or how, could you tell me? Go ahead.
Could we legally do so? We could legally do so. It's been my practice throughout the entire time, when people come to us with resolutions or citizen petitions, not under areas where the city has jurisdiction, not to take a vote on those items. If the city council wants to change that practice, they certainly can, but that's been my practice for as long as I've been mayor.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other comments or questions by members of the council? Does anyone else wish to provide testimony on this item? Comments or questions by members of this council in light of the motion? Roll call.
Mayor, could you please explain the motion again? I'm sorry, I could barely hear.
Vice Mayor made the motion to deny the petition. So, a yes vote would have the purpose of no on the citizen petition.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. It looks like I'm going to be in line with the progressives on the council. I'm going to be voting yes on this.
Thank you. Roll call. Okay, real quick question? Okay, with that explanation, roll call. DeCiccio.
Yeah.
Gallego. Noakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Valenzuela.
Yes.
Waring. Williams. Mayor Stanton. Yes, so the motion passes unanimously before the city council. There will be no further business before the city council. Today's meeting is adjourned.